All right, let's call the meeting to order at 6:30. Please join us in the invocation and the pledge. Dear Lord, please illuminate the path before us, helping us to navigate each step with wisdom and grace. May we find courage in uncertainty and trust in your divine plan. Surround us with your love and protect us from obstacles that may arise. Let our hearts be open to the lessons learned along the way, and may we walk this path with faith and purpose. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that brings us to item three on our agenda, public comments. Ms. Nancy, do we have any public comments today?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Justin, Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm libidinous.
I have a question. I think I know the answer to this, but who is it that signs checks? Who has the authority to sign checks?
So is that in one of the reports under consent that you want to pull up?
They're all in the council report. When any of them that are checked, who's signing the check? It's just a simple question.
Well, the two signers on the account are Kelly Mottula and me.
Okay.
Trying to keep us on the agenda, though. So if there's an item particular...
Well, and I'm just saying that I have a hard time passing these because I'm not always sure that we're given the right information. And my example is the last month when Courtney asked, was there a check made out to make in the cut? And Julie said it was not, there was no check. It was nothing but software reconciliation. And she said it several times, that you all had the chance, but you didn't do it, to say, yes, there was a check, because you all signed it.
Okay, if you, hold on just one second. Faith, just hold on one second, would you? Let's make sure we're doing the right procedure. Still, since we're kind of in a meandering way, not specific to the topics in the consent agenda, are we okay to continue this discussion, or should we hold it in a different way?
Was there, if it could help, if there's a particular check item, like was it in October report or December report?
It was September report. The check was for $31,200. And it was, we were told it was nothing but reconciliation of the accounts. But when Josh was asked, did he receive a check for $31,200? He did. He did. So it wasn't just a reconciliation. Because Courtney asked, point blank, was there a check?
So the question is, if that's not...
No, my point is...
Was it September, or was it one of the months that's on the consent?
It was September, but we've got so many questions.
You can have it. You can have this discussion, but let's make sure that we're doing it properly. Like, should it be on the written item, or do we standardize items?
These are, I'm talking about the finance.
So Phil, can you give us... Are we okay to keep talking about this, since it's not specific to any of the items that are on consent?
Yeah, I have a hesitation to turn talking about specific line items that aren't on the agenda in fuller detail. Now, we can have a motion to have that item specifically brought to a future agenda, and then we can second it and go from there, only because we don't have the record in front of us to discuss around it. If there's, again, if there's a particular item on any of these expense reports, of course they can be pulled and specifically discussed. Discussing previous items on previous agenda, when it's not on the agenda, is, may violate discussions, no convenience, and things like that, just because it's not on the agenda. General questions about processes and things like that, that's fine. That's just understanding kind of how the process, who signs the checks, and things like that, because there are checks on this, et cetera. But if there's specific items that need to be brought back to the agenda to discuss more completely, then we can, like I said, absolutely have that, and that's just done through a motion. It's called a petition, but in essence, you could do it as a motion in council, so you make the motion, either move that such-and-such item on, you know, next month's agenda, or next meeting's agenda, and then second, and then go from there, and when it's approved, it will get put on that agenda item. Then we can discuss it more completely and have other records to bring up, or whatever it might evolve around.
Right, bring the support material for it. If I'd realized you wanted to ask, we could have added it, but I didn't, so it's not on this one.
Well, I was just wondering why you all didn't say anything about it last time. And it's, it's an example as to why I can't go yes on these financials.
Understood.
Because I don't think we're always being told the truth about it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mine's kind of simple, I think.
Is it related to these items that are on consent?
Absolutely is.
Okay, great.
So you presented the revenue and expense report for October and November, but you did not present payment or council reports for October and November. You only presented council and payment reports for December.
That's right. Because you, October and November were presented...
No, ma'am, they were not. They were not. They were not part of our last meeting at all. November was already...
Are you going to let me finish a sentence, or are we gonna...
Absolutely, but I'm just telling you, they were not. I can, I got them right here.
These two reports, I presented last month. We had a lot of approvals at the same time, so we did not take any motions, or include them in any motions. And I told you I'd bring them back, so that council had more time to review October and November. So those are the two reports that I said we would bring back, and so it's the same information that you got at the last meeting in January.
But there was no, there was no November payment or council report at all presented last week, or last meeting, you said it wasn't available.
Again, since I didn't know that you had questions about it, I didn't bring that. It's not on this agenda, so I can bring it at a future agenda if you would like to.
I'd like to make a motion that we pull all three of these, then, so that we can see the complete report, because we don't have an expense and revenue report for December, and we don't have the payment and council reports for October or November.
If I might, you have all three reports for December, so are you just talking about October and November, or...
I don't have all three reports for December. I have one that's redacted, or, I'm sorry, one that's redacted, one that's regular, and then the payment report.
And that one right there, is that not December?
It's another printout of the original.
Okay, hold, let's do this.
I mean, if we can bring back, there's been another council meeting, and that's fine, but...
Deal with the items as they are on the agenda now. You're asking to take two items off for, like, the second, October and November of 2024, from the consent agenda, so we can have further discussion in a minute.
Consent agenda or not, these bills have been paid, so it's...
Okay, I'm asking, are you asking if we can take October and November, or all October, November, December, off of consent and discuss them individually? Or what is your request?
We can't discuss them individually if you don't have that documentation, correct?
Okay. The consent agenda contains draft city council meeting minutes and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 finance documents. Are there any of those documents that either of you are asking to take off consent, so we can discuss them further in just a minute, because that's how that process works?
If you don't want it to be in consent, you take it off, and we'll talk about it separately in a minute.
If we don't have the resources and the data, how do we take it off and discuss it later?
All I'm asking, we're just gonna take it off, and in two minutes after you pass the consent agenda items, then we'll go back to it and have further discussion about what we need.
Okay.
Because a consent agenda contains more than just that.
And those are the three items that I make a motion we pull. I think it's just the revenue and expense report for October, B, C, D, E, and F.
Okay. We'll remove all of those and discuss them in a moment. So we have a motion and a second to consider and take action on the consent agenda, which now contains only the draft city council meeting minutes of January 28, 2025. Any further discussion about the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all that unanimous for item A. Okay, item B is the revenue expense report for October 2024. That item is being brought back from previous agenda. Councilmember Cox, or anyone, do you have a motion or an action about that? If you wanted to table it, so that the rest of the documents come back, you can make that motion, or any motion that you...
I mean, we don't have the supporting documents, so yeah, I would like to table it, so that it can come back.
Okay, so we have a motion to table item B. Do we have a second?
Could I just have clarification? Courtney, what is it that's missing?
We don't have a payment, we don't have the, we have the expense and revenue, so it shows us how much we spent and how much we brought in. We do not have the council report or payment report to show where these monies came from, where they went, that kind of thing, they're just kind of all over the locations. I just, I have questions based on the...
They were presented last January, but they're not here today to go with it, so that's, if you'd like to discuss it, I guess.
I think, because it was in January, but they're not together.
That's right. All right. Motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have a motion on item B? The revenue and expense report for October 2024. We'll consider that no action? What's the protocol?
Yeah, no motion, so no action taken.
So we'll say no action taken on item B, revenue expense for October. Item C, revenue and expense report only for November 2024. Do we have a motion?
Again, I'll make a motion that we bring it back, because there's no supporting documents.
Okay, we've got a motion to table for councilmember Cox. Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have a new motion? All right, council takes no action. Item D is the council report for December 2024. It goes in conjunction with the payment report, which is item C, and the revenue and expense report, which is item F. If we want to take them one at a time, do we have a motion on item D, the council report?
I have questions on...
So item D, councilmember Carlson, is the city council report. These are the typical three reports that are brought in together for the month of December.
I don't like that.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I might have missed something. So we're looking for a motion to, for council to approve or accept the report, or not, or whatever action council wants to take. Okay, council takes no action on December 2024 council report. Item E is the payment report for December 2024. Do we have a motion? All right, council takes no action on payment report for December 2024. Item F is revenue and expense for December 2024. Do we have a motion? All right, council takes no action on the finance reports for the month of December. Moving on to item five, new business. We're going to change the order of the agenda up a little bit in a moment. Item A is consider and take action to appoint a new member to the Keep Simonton Beautiful Commission. I think we have a, an appeal or a presentation from Angela King with Keep Simonton Beautiful?
There's a presentation, but it's not...
Okay, not a presentation, thanks. Angela's going to tell you about our...
No, so we had a conference room, and we all sat down and met with her, and voted to pack our joint award, and it's Louise Talbot.
Thank you, Louise, for coming and for volunteering. Her application is part of your packet. So council, we're asking you to consider and take action to appoint our new member to Keep Simonton Beautiful. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second you.
Thank you. Kelly? Justin? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that's unanimous. Welcome, Louise, and thank you so much. Item B, consider and take action regarding an addition for meeting minutes to the resolution number 2025-01. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simonton, adopting the amended rules and procedures related to city council deliberations and public comment during city council meetings. What's being added is from the state, sorry, you get the information from the state, basically Robert's Rules of Orders and the state instruction about shaking minutes. We've had some discussion off and on about that over the last couple of months. So the one paragraph at the very end in the packet is the item that we're discussing. Council, do we have a motion?
One micro motion.
Thank you, Burns.
Can we discuss that real quick?
Do we have a second? Thank you, Justin.
So wait, I gotta quit, I gotta...
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. You pointed to the fact, so this is the current policy? This is the new one?
That's correct, they're both in your binder.
Right, but you said that the last paragraph is added, that does not apply to Robert's Rules.
Okay, well, I apologize, item 20, the very last item, which is 24, or 24, whatever that number is, has moved down to the last position, so the item added is numbered 24. You can see that the last item on both versions is actually the same one, so instead of 25, it's item 24. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you abstaining?
Yeah, because the documents are not accurate.
Okay. We have one abstain for councilmember Cox. Thank you. Item G, we're going to go ahead and bring from the bottom of the agenda up now. This is consider and take action regarding the January 2025 Revenue Management Services Report. Ryan Fortner is here to present to council.
Thank you, Mayor, for joining us, City Council, I'm very pleased to help, I do appreciate that. Everyone should have a copy of the January 2025 sales tax report within your packets. I will begin on page five. This information was through the month of January. Keep in mind that January, when you look at the sales tax calendar, January is month 7 of October, the middle of November. So January would reflect there being still one more month in the sales tax calendar year 2024 for revenue expenses in the state. Just looking at the current demographics, the city is averaging an allocation of $146,002 or $356 per year, breaking down to $12,628,88 per month. We are showing current allocations 2025, $28,000, $39,75. At the time when this report was generated, there was not enough data to do an average allocation that would come out in February, and your current fiscal year allocation, $17,0053671. In all, since 2000, the city bringing in $3,801,292,67 in sales taxes. Below, you'll see 2025, just begin there. Again, it's small, just the January allocation, but that will continue to grow as we proceed throughout the following months. On page six, receiving confidential data from the state, we're also able to receive data coming in on how many sales tax filers make up your checks. In January 2024, there were 538 sales tax filers. In January 2025, there was 566, representing a 5.2% increase in sales tax filers, with an average of 522 filings. Now, most of those sales tax filings, I mentioned to you all, do come from e-commerce, and that's a fantastic benefit for the city. One of the things that we're noticing, I just left the meeting earlier, where they just lost 13% of the businesses, the hardcore retail businesses, the river district, because they're smaller. So the economics of inflation and, you know, last year being a very highly politically charged election year are affecting client sales, but you guys are doing pretty well in more sales tax filings when we look at it on a month-over-month basis. January is a non-quarter filing month. February, May, August, and November are, and that's historically when we look at the city's sales tax filing numbers, when we see the highest files. So when you review your February report, which was submitted, you will see higher revenue and higher sales tax filings than this month as well. We're currently showing 604 sales tax filers in February 2023, that is the highest that we have seen in the history of the city. However, when you look at January, having 566 as a non-quarter filing month, I can with all certainty guarantee that that number will be eclipsed at some point in time. On the following page, page seven, your three-year comparison by month, showing kind of revenue streams, how they run up, fluctuated, and flowed, and whatnot. 2025, the call will begin for February. On page eight, looking at your top 25 historical, excuse me, pardon me, confidential filings for the last 12 months, you will see individual businesses that make up your top 25 sales tax filers, their individual confidential dollar amounts off to the far end of the side. And then you will note that there were 24 filers during this 12-month period that made over $1,000 of income to the city, and then off 311,025,66. On the following page, looking just at the month of January, again, you'll see the confidential data for businesses that are top 25. These businesses remitted $25,032.07 to you all. Total recovery, $36,979.9, you remain to change in that, and you see the February report. In December, there were six individual businesses that made filings over $1,000, and those six businesses hit 84% of the allocations that you received. And as I mentioned previously, the number of businesses that are being larger, a lot of that has to do with e-commerce filings. On page 10, you'll see that we have the top 10 e-commerce filings from January, your confidential filing amounts, $3,007,3435. And from January 2024, the present support, 13-month average, what we have here is your top 10, $35,006,3135. On page 11, looking at the allocation received by the city, January reflected $28,139,75. January of last year, $27,196,72, so that was a 3.5% increase. So again, while I have clients that are seeing revenues go down, businesses go out, the city is seeing businesses not just rise, and your sales tax averages are not dropping. Showing your current fiscal years, mentioned previously, $17,0053671. We do show the January historical collections. After that, your historical allocations from 2019 through 2025, with 2023 highlighted there, the recovery, $50,093,72. And that's highlighted because going forward, that skew numbers. Recoveries are wonderful, but when you look at a recovery, a large slide, and if you start going down blindly, it will skew your numbers to the negative. So that's highlighted just for reference there for you all. All right, with that said, again, you have, you'll have a copy of your February report to review. Questions on that that need it, please contact me. I did want to ask, is there any forthcoming projects, construction, business openings that are going to happen through 2025, and have you put installations in the, in your city's files? Things that need to look into or receive on our radar?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay. Well, that concludes my report. Have any questions you all might have to make?
Okay, thank you so much, Ryan.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for another year here in the city, and I look forward to meeting you in a second or minute.
Absolutely. Counsel, do we have a motion to consider and take action on the January 2025 Revenue Management Report?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Faith. I second it. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel, if you're comfortable, if I may, just get on the, whatever, whatnot.
Yeah, thank you so much. Safe travels tonight. All right, item C, consider and take action regarding the city hall project revision. There's no action to be taken, well, that's not true. I'll give you an option. City, council, you'll see in your packet a recap of expense, that is our estimate. If we move forward with the plans that have been revised by the architect firm to make our one bathroom of the existing city hall ADA compliant as part of the requirements of our construction project, it is for just under $25,000. You could choose to approve that with conditions. It's an email from Josh Mayfield, and lists out the different parts of the project. The conditions are, because we are still working with Bureau Veritas and the State of Texas Inspector for ADA compliance, our Bureau Veritas inspector actually thinks that our bathroom is compliant the way it is, with no modifications other, one modification, to take the door and reverse the swing, so it swings out into the hallway, not into the bathroom. The state, when the blueprints were revised and sent to them, they approved the project the way it is, which has been pushing the wall out five feet and moving a sink, which causes us to tear up a floor, and it's a significant project, that's why it would cost $25,000 in total. If we can get that down to zero, or how much it would cost to modify that door, that's the goal. And that's not complete yet. We're trying to get a state inspector to come out and do an onsite consultation with us to give us that answer, because our local inspector can't approve it, but we still have to have the state give us the final blessing, since this is a municipal building. We don't want to go ahead and not change it, and then they come out at the very end of the project and say, this doesn't comply, we'll go back to tackling this restroom. So for the sake of moving the project along quickly, once we know the answer from the inspector, it would be expeditious if council were to approve a no-brader then of $25,000 for this bathroom renovation?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I sort of, I probably should have thought about this a long time ago, but I'm glad you asked me, I sort of think, and I'm sure that I noted, sure that, why was the Mayfield bathroom not in there in the original, you know, whole contract, the engineering design and everything?
The architectural design didn't identify that it was needed. It was well into the project when the realization was made that the additional capacity of the meeting space, the courtroom, would require us to bring that bathroom into ADA compliance.
So it was determined by the number of people that then, from the board...
That was the trigger. We have Shannon here with LJA, am I, I'm saying that correctly, right?
Yep, just making sure.
Was this project bonded?
The contractor here has issued an...
Was, was this particular, was the City of Simonton bonded and protected in this event that a mistake like this was made?
Yes.
Okay, so you said you're going back to the state to see if they will approve it. In my knowledge, and from my experience, an ADA bathroom is required in every building, whether it's a public building or a government building, because that's the American Disabilities Act. However...
Yes, but when you're going in, it doesn't automatically trigger an ADA until certain things get hit. So two things happened, the space got larger, and we were actually impacting the space by moving the door, doing other things. So the minute you actually start to change the way you walk to the bathroom, or the pathway, it triggered it up. So it also got triggered by the garage bathroom being upgraded, too. Granted, we are not making that garage bathroom ADA compliant, because we've got variants in opening ends of bathrooms, but because of those changes, it... But because of those changes, it got put into an ADA compliant out of the grand order. Otherwise, there are things that don't have to be ADA compliant because there aren't any.
When did that happen?
What do you mean, what, what happened?
When did it get put not into ADA compliancy?
You mean my...
When did that, when did that flag go up and they said, hey, we got, we made a mistake?
Just recently.
There's been no...
I couldn't tell you, Courtney, if that was in November, December, when I first brought it to council that we had an issue, I'd have to go back and look at the date for that.
Well, you brought it up to, brought it up at our December meeting. And we've thus, I mean, since then, I know I've, I've asked, I don't know whoever else has asked, I think Burns made mention of it or whatnot, that we would like to just see a complete analysis of exactly what all this cost us, has cost us, and whether or not we were going to be able to go back to, whether it be engineers or architects or whatever the case may be, to kind of recover some of these funds because we are additionally overspent in what we had originally approved.
So at this point, we are not overspent, and that was the presentation that I gave in about December. I did get a question about this from Faith on email last night, but I did not have opportunity to go back and pull the meeting minutes out. But that, that information was where we had saved money and we were under. Did counsel want to go ahead and approve the overhead lighting, which would still leave us slightly under? And there haven't been any changes to that until we have this estimate for this bathroom situation. So we haven't made any additional changes since that discussion.
Right, but in the meeting in December, you did not give exact numbers. You gave an overage and underage of what would it would cost us or save us to do this lighting, that lighting, and you only got a consensus?
Since we, there's been no additional expense, Courtney. And I gave line by line, dollar by dollar, what we had saved on this, we had saved on the vent, we had spent money on that. You approved to go ahead with the facing on the bench and the lighting at that meeting.
You got a consensus to look at the cost of that. You did not get a vote. We did not vote on it.
I'm not going to argue with you. But if you had asked me that question in advance, I could have brought it to you. I appreciate that you went and looked it up. Yeah, right? And so...
You said there was a consensus, but we did not...
To proceed with the lighting.
No, it was to...
Well, this is the minutes in the, the attachment that was presented is what we need to go pull out because that's what's presented to counsel for you to make that.
And that was, it's not in this, and it was not in the supporting documents.
I'm happy to go back and get it for you, but 6:00 PM the day before, I didn't have enough time during the day today to go get your supporting materials from the previous meeting.
But I did ask for it, and it probably is in that other notebook. But we were, we have not been presented with total costs ever for this project.
Okay, it has been presented. I'll be happy to bring it back at the next agenda if you'd like.
Yes, I would love it.
Okay.
And Shannon said something about when the project got larger, I didn't know that we had enlarged the project.
Your capacity in your council chambers, as the project got larger, I don't know if the builder did or not, but how many people can be in the council chamber got larger?
See.
There was a mention of that in that meeting that I, I wanted it, that you had stated that. That was the first time that we had heard anything about that, that there was a possible problem with the amount of people. But that is, it was never presented to us.
I don't even know how to help you with that at this very moment because absolutely we talked about it. And when I told you there was a concern that came up, we worked to have the architect draw the revised plans, we've been through this whole process, and counsel has been kept apprised. So I'll be happy to go back and find the notes and lay that out for you if that's helpful.
Be sure that on the next agenda that we have, we got the complete list of everything that, what LJ has...
I'll be happy to bring that back for you. It's already in here, so we'll bring that back.
I don't know if Shannon can answer these questions. There's drawings here. What is this? Is this what we've already approved or is this what has been redone?
Well, since I created the support materials, why don't you ask me what you're referring to specifically?
It came from, oh, no, I'm sorry. It did not come from you. I apologize. It came from the architect.
Right, and I've included them as a reference point. You've seen this before in the blueprints, probably. They're the exact same thing. One is the entire sheet, so you can see the stamp and all the good things. And the other is just the bathroom exploded, so you can see the full view because it's very tiny in the original drawing. And if you look at the very top of the second, I think it's the second one in order, you can see a number four there, kind of as a reference point. That's where it shows pushing the wall out into the garage. And it indicates moving the sink from right next to the commode on the east wall to the south wall. This is the remedy that's proposed by the architect and that we're trying to find out if we really have to do that or if we are okay the way we are with a modification to the door.
How long will it take you to receive that answer? Do you know?
I do not know. The inspector has not booked an appointment date with us yet.
I would like to make a motion to table this until we have that answer because there's no need to basically approve a blank check for something that may not be required.
Okay, for the rest of counsel, it would not be approving a blank check. It would be up to this amount of money with the goal being reduce it and not have to make the serious modifications. But we have a motion on the table to table the approval for the $24,959 that is estimated to do the full construction in the bathroom to meet the current ADA compliance proposed plan. Do we have a second? All right, the motion dies for lack of a second?
Hold on a second, Lori, hold on.
Okay.
Please. She says she was gonna, she had a question?
Yes.
She asked, we just hold for a second. While she's thinking, could I ask a question? We'll just hold one second.
The current motion is what? To table approval of the funding if this is the plan that we're required to go with.
Just until we get an answer from the ADA.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Did you have a question? Yes. Two questions. One is, if I understand right, what's holding up the project is we'd like to have it for the state approval to change the way the door swings and make it where it's not going to cost us this amount of money.
That's right.
But if that doesn't work, if it does work, how much of this bid is applicable? I'm sure it's, you know, with the potty in the dumpster, that's, I'm sure that's an ongoing monthly charge there. But do you have any idea how much of this applies?
It'll depend on what he says we have to do. The concrete work would be eliminated completely. If we still had to move the wall, there could be some. But so the concrete work is $2,999. And the, it's not next to it. Hold on one second. There's a second item that goes with that, I thought. Maybe you removed it. Anyway, so the concrete, the electrical, the vent removal and installation, flooring demo of $2,457 would be removed. So those, just those few items that for sure would be removed. About at least $8,000. There's another $1,700 for electrical. So I mean, there's no reason in my mind to think that this couldn't be reduced to somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 instead of $24,000.
Where's that money coming from?
So counsel would decide if, well, go ahead and finish your question or see if I've answered your question.
Well, if we pass the motion, are we saying that we're going to spend another $25,000 if they say, you know, no on this? Is that what we're agreeing to?
To go ahead and make this bathroom. If we've run out of all the other options we could do, we'd do. So we have a motion on the table, a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Just a second. Just a second. Just until those questions that you've presented, that you're seeking are answered. I think that is our best option so that we don't overshoot it over...
You've made your point, and we have your motion to table, just if you would.
So a second to, all second to table.
All right, we have a second to table from Faith.
Till we get the answer.
Counsel, any further discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Justin, Burns, Kelly. So that motion does not pass, dies? Do we have a new motion?
I'll make a motion that we make no action or take no action, excuse me, on this particular bid until we get the answers that we are seeking.
Phil? What's the procedure for that?
Yeah, I would argue it's the same motion. So it's tabling or taking no action. Just lack of a motion will result in no action. And so, I mean, you could put forward the motion, but it's in essence the same motion that just failed, but arguably would be different enough. But again, taking no action is no action taken without, which feels like a redundant sentence, but we'll be doing it.
Okay, so that would be your choice at this point if you want to continue, us to continue to take that motion through?
I'm going to stick with the fact that I don't think it's right for us to take action on something.
But you made a motion, so I'm asking if you want us to follow the motion through the council.
If you're going to ask for a second, then ask for a second. If not, it dies, I guess.
Okay, do we have a second on another motion to table? All right, the motion dies. So if we're not going to table, do we have a motion on this item?
Could I make a motion that we pass it with the restriction that we visited again to be sure what, what the cost is going to be? You pulled it, go ahead. Is that, does that make sense? Not just our block, just because if we don't hear from the state inspector, then the decision could be made to just go ahead with this, which is what we're saying, right?
I think if we take a motion on this now, you're approving that this, there's a no greater than this number, and if we exhaust all of our other opportunities to modify it and make it less, then we're to go ahead with this last option. So do we have a motion from counsel?
I will make a motion that we accept this to where it, it doesn't exceed the $24,959.
Okay. All right, we have a second from Justin.
I'm going to push it.
Pass it.
It's to pass it with no greater than the $24,959. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
I'm going to oppose.
Faith is going to abstain, and Courtney is opposed. The motion carries. Thank you, counsel, and I promise you can count on me to...
Pretty sure we're opposed.
No, he voted for it.
He voted no.
So, so Faith, in this case...
I didn't hear you correctly, so my apologies.
In this case, because it's a two, two...
Oh, I have to say yes or no?
We, I'd prefer, because an abstention usually goes with the majority, but there's no majority. And so by taking actual action, we can know if it's a yes or no and move forward with it. If not, it might be...
Then I'll change mine to no.
Okay, then you.
Okay. All right. That gives us another month to work on approvals. All right, item D, consider and take action to adopt the code of ordinances. In your materials, you have the code of ordinances that this council worked on, workshops, and set up. We, I realized the other day, looking for a code to help a request from a resident that our work that council did had not been updated into E-code. And when I asked them about it, they went back and said, uh-oh, I'm really sorry, we didn't ever give you the final draft for you to adopt. So what you have is, in your email, you received a copy of the final draft. I didn't print it because it's 272 pages long. Figured we didn't want to spend the paper and the printing to do that. But you do have the materials that go with it to help you with a summary of what changes you made. It's been reviewed from the work that you did. Phil has taken an additional look at it before we brought it to council for approval. And the letter that you got, the email, just gave you the information about the page numbers, some formatting, and those types of items that you might see in the code will be corrected when it's finalized by general code. So do we have a motion to adopt the final draft of our code of ordinances that were updated last year?
All opposed.
Burns?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Burns and Faith? Any discussion?
I only have one question. Anything that we've done since February of last year as far as codes and ordinances, because I know there's been several that were approved, was this added to what our changes were? Because this was a full year ago.
Right, so I was, I was trying to think through, I don't believe any of the ordinance we passed were code revisions. They were ordinances to adopt budgets and things like that, which don't necessarily update the code. But what they'll do is they will accept that, then any of the codes that are, if we had any code revisions, again, I couldn't remember if we had any, I was looking back through, any code revisions from February until now, will then lay on top of that and then we'll update as it goes. And so, yeah, it doesn't negate anything done since February. That's why the date of February 2024 is put there. It's not saying that we're adopting it. Yes, we're taking action today, but it's as of February 2024. Anything since then that may have revised the code is still going to be applicable, is still going to lay on top of that if we've updated the International Building Code, anything like that, all that will be updated as part of this.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item E is CenterPoint Energy Resiliency Plan. As we usually do, you have the lettuce from, the lettuce, the letter from Thomas Bracato with Lloyd Goslink-Lawper that gives the update and their recommendation of whether or not cities should take action. You will have seen that the recommendation is not to take action. In summary, CenterPoint has filed a revised transmission and distribution resiliency plan with the Public Utility Commission. They did this last year in April. Then they withdrew the application shortly after Hurricane Barrell. In last year's plan, they proposed to spend 2.28 billion over three years. And the current proposed resiliency plan filed on that previous Friday, they proposed to spend double the previous request of 5.75 billion over the next three years. It's intended to mitigate the impact of events such as Barrell, extreme wind, weather, and temperatures. The Lloyd Goslink and... barrel, extreme wind, weather, and temperatures. The Lloyd Goslink and representation of us and all of the small cities that are in this group have intervened in proceeding in order to evaluate their proposed plan. So their proposal is not that this plan is not appropriate, but that there needs to be time to evaluate it, so they're recommending no action at this time. As that changes or it progresses, I'll bring that back to council with additional updates and action. Item F is consider and take action regarding proposed temporary roadwork on Honda Road. I asked each council member by email on Friday if you had a chance to go by and walk or at least drive Honda. It is on our list for road repair. We still don't know if our request for repair is going to be able to handle by Fort Bend County Road and Bridge in this calendar year. They did not get to it last calendar year, but the degradation of the road has gotten so significant that we've had some homeowners request help, because people are driving in their yards to avoid the worst of the potholes and destruction that's on the road. So the item that you have from Fort Bend County Road and Bridge is to go out there and do a temporary patch. The estimate is five to $7,000, if I recall correctly?
Aye.
Five to eight? And so they would drop material and grade onto the road? Should.
Will they not do it for the whole road, we're told, too? Will they not do that?
They do not have, they're overbooked with requests, and they're trying to figure out what their calendar is going to be. It's not the season for it right now, so they're trying to.
So they would do this?
They would, and they're aware that it's on our repair list, or our replacement actually list. But since we don't know when that could possibly happen, the residents are asking for relief.
Would it be all the potholes?
There's, I mean, I drove it, I didn't have to drive into anybody's yard to get it patched up, but now people are rude, I guess.
It's pretty bad, though, so what they would do is, they would grade it.
There's three sections, so would they do those three sections, or is this, or we just talked about one pothole?
I, no, they would do the whole length of the road.
Okay.
It says four to six loads, and let us know when you're ready.
Isn't that what I wanted to ask?
They would grade it, they'll bring in the loads of chip code or whatever product, and then they'll roll it in.
So it's more than just filling the pothole?
Yes, it is, the damage is a lot more significant than a pothole repair, so we ask for their evaluation.
I don't have a problem approving something like this. I would have a question as far as his answer. His answer is a little convoluted, in the fact that he states this request is beyond a simple repair, the road is on the replacement list, but we're going to charge you $5,000 to $8,000 to go dump four to six loads of pot mix on it, that they're just going to have to tear back up and incur additional costs. So kind of to Burns' point, is there an opportunity for us to ask that question? Because this, by all indications, he says, let us know when you'd like to get on the schedule and proceed. So I don't know if there's an opportunity.
So we can get on the schedule for this temporary repair? We cannot yet know when we might get on the schedule for the full replacement.
Could we not ask that question?
I did.
Oh, because it's not in here.
It's just more than one conversation, but this was his response specifically about, after I've asked him to go out there and do a survey on Honda and find out if it's patchable, pothole patch, or what they could recommend.
So, I mean, this road has been on the replacement list since 2018, and it's not, it's not been looked at since. Obviously, it's a small road, and I get it, it's a huge pothole. I drove it as well, or kind of drove around it. I didn't have to go on anybody's property either, but I just feel like they, spending $5,000 to $8,000, putting a Band-Aid on a flesh wound, if you will, and then they're going to charge us for removal of said Band-Aid on flesh wound, to someday down the line, replace that.
You don't think the homeowners on that road need some relief?
Oh, absolutely do.
Because I've had to go into yards to get around the potholes.
I, I'm not debating that at all, and that's not my question or my statement. My question is, is we're going to spend $5,000 to $8,000 to only incur future costs that when the road in fact needs to be done. It's been on the list for six years.
But if we're still more than a year out, you don't think that $5,000 to $8,000 is well worth it to those homeowners on that road?
I'm certain it is, Kelly. My question was not directed at you. My question was directed at the mayor in the fact that can we not at least ask what the schedule looks like, being that this road has been on the replacement list for six years?
So I answered it a moment ago. I have asked this question. Two years ago, it was not on the list with the Fort Bend County, because it wasn't funded. So this last year, it was returned to the request for Fort Bend County, because it was funded. It didn't get on their schedule last year, because they're overbooked. So we've carried our request over, pointed out that it's a second year request for not only this road, but the ones that were identified when the budget was created for it. And the answer is still right now, that that schedule for this year is not complete, and they don't know if Simonton is going to make the list or not, because they have some pretty significant sized projects. Our next option will be to bid it out with a contractor, where we don't get the partnership deal where they pay for all the labor and equipment. I'm sorry, Burns, go ahead.
I wrote another nine. I don't want to fix it. I voted to. So if you entertain a motion, I'll make the motion that we prepare.
Great.
I second this.
All right, so we have a first and a second for Burns and Kelly. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right, I don't think I've skipped any. I was going to double check when we're going out of order. All right, that's all of the items for item five. Item six is executive session. We do not have a session on our topic today, so we'll skip to item nine, which is reports. Apparently, the staple and I are going to have a battle, sorry. The flood, the regional flood mitigation program application that we have had in motion since 2023 is moving forward slowly, but it's making progress. We've made changes and updates that have been required. This is called the McNOD, for reference. The changes and updates and miscellaneous items that have been requested on our application have been filled. We've had three different rounds of requests for information. I think that is complete. We are, so we're moving forward in the process. This is the grant where we were waiting for the money to be released from low to moderate income, or LMI, to urgent need. We've been qualified for LMI, we do qualify for urgent need, and we're super close to finishing with the application process where it's accepted and finalized, so that it could be funded by this central grant. There is no set timeline for it yet, but if we're being optimistic, there could be a shovel in the ground at the end of 2025 on this project. So I'll keep you posted as that continues to move along. That includes things like the total rebuild of wagon. It has drainage culverts underneath it that are failing and critical for us to replace. We've had some discussions about what if we need to fund it ourselves, because we can't wait. So good news is that it is finally moving along and looking like great progress. Our Judge George, Chief of Staff, Shanika Smith, came out and met with us today, and they were happy to take away with them a couple of projects that we have just made, no progress on our own, or that it's slow going. So the US Postal Service, then the mapping problem that is plaguing Simonton, they realize now they have two other cities that have made the same request, and they're willing to take that and work on it and try to put all three cities together and see if we can make some headway. They also have some optimism that they can change the addresses that are impacted in the emergency response system that is part of the county, so that it doesn't show up if there's an emergency call, that this is in Wallace, that your address could be in Wallace, and causing confusion about who would respond. So that would be a temporary patch that would be in our county only, but they have some optimism that they can have some impact on that. They also are going to work on giving us an update on the buyout lots. They realize that Simonton has more buyout lots in our city than the entire rest of the county together, and they have another change in the administration on that. So they think that they can move the projects along more quickly and hopefully give us a timeline of when those lots would become property of the city of Simonton. That would be helpful as we're budget planning for 2026, so that we know if we're allocating resources to do legal agreements, maintenance, those sorts of things. And last, they are going to continue to work to keep our project moving along from the angle that they can, along with our commissioner for the intersection project in Simonton, so that we can get a timeline and keep tech stop moving forward on that. And my last item is a message of thanks and happy birthday to our media specialist. Abby's birthday is today. Thank you for spending your birthday here at City Council.
I would, can't imagine being anywhere else.
City staff, any reports? Phil?
Yes, so again, just with the adoption of the code and going to Ecode 360, there were a couple of recommendations also coming out of that, of future ordinances that we need to adopt, and so I'll be drafting those up, and we'll be coming to the council, just again, cleaning things up as we continue to update. And I'll double check if, Nancy, to see if, or you brought up earlier the point, any sort of code refining that has come up in between the interim, we'll double check to make sure that those.
I think most of them were ordinances, or not necessarily codes.
Yeah, I don't think there are code revisions, but.
But we discussed updating several of the codes that were previously brought into the right lingo.
Right, correct. So we'll double check on that, just to make sure they have what they need, but.
Awesome.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, anybody have a report? All right, if not, we will adjourn at 7:33. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Oh, hang on, we skipped all over the next meeting. When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 18.
March 18.
Mm-hmm.